Our meeting today, I call this meeting to order. And we're going to ask Reverend Dr. Jiao Hung Toi, from the founder of United Methodist Church, to come and give the invocation. Thank you.
I would like to invite all of you to sit aside your distractions and worries and take a deep breath. Breathe in peace. Breathe out stress. Breathe in the breath of life. Breathe out anxiety. Let us pray. Dear God of wisdom, we are gathered here to serve people in the city of Virginia Beach. Bless each one of us with your wisdom. Fill our hearts with hope for the future. Help us to serve our beloved city with justice and love. We pray for those who work for the city. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, government officers, the police, the fire department, the postal office, and hospitals. We give you thanks for their service. Bless them and their families so that they can commit themselves to the work of the city. We also pray for our schools, teachers, students, administrators, for your blessing and protection from many forms of violence. Now, we pray for those who have lost their homes and loved ones from hurricane in. Comfort them with your peace and power. Give them strength to rebuild. We also pray for those who help them. Lord have mercy. Help us stand in solidarity with them and support them generously. In all these things, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the Constitution of America, the free, equal, and indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you and good evening. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
All are present. Okay, at this point, do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session? Okay, vote is open.
Just one second, please. Yeah. The vote is open now. Counsel. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Thank you. At this point, move for the approval of the minutes of the informal informal session of September 20, 2022, and the special formal session of September 27, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
The vote is open. Councilmember Holcomb, thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, we have a resolution in memoriam for a remarkable individual. We're going to ask Cilly Diaz from the Filipino Women's Club of Tidewater President to come up to the podium. Anybody present?
Ms. Diaz?
Yeah, how about a couple folks? Come on up. And welcome and good evening. You know, it's indeed an honor to read this resolution. Rosa Anorco Blanco was president of the Filipino Women's Club of Tidewater, which was the first Filipino organization in Hampton Roads, established in April 12 of 1984, and continued to serve on its board and directors. And whereas Rosa Blanco was the longest-serving treasurer of 32 years for the Council of United Filipino Organizations of Tidewater, Virginia, Inc., which was started in January 16, 1976. And whereas Rosa Blanco was a member of the Philippine Cultural Center, Virginia Beach Board of Trustees. And whereas Rosa chaired the Scholarship Committee for the United Alonaco Association of Tidewater and served on its Board of Directors. And whereas Rosa Blanco greatly supported the programs of Philfest USA. And whereas Rosa Blanco graduated from the University of the Philippines with a Bachelor of Science in Education with a major in mathematics and a minor in physics. And whereas Rosa Blanco graduated from Old Dominion University with a Master's in Science and Education with a concentration in mathematics. And whereas Rosa Blanco taught mathematics and physics in the Philippines and Brew Baker Academy in Norfolk, Virginia. And whereas Rosa Blanco was appointed as the chairperson for the mathematics department at Brandon Junior High. She also taught mathematics at Tallwood High School and Tidewater Community College in Virginia Beach, Virginia. She retired in 2010 with a total of 41 years as an educator. And whereas Rosa Blanco served as treasurer of the Tidewater Council of Teachers in Mathematics, member of the Mathematics Curriculum Committee and Scholarship Committees of Virginia Beach. And whereas Rosa Blanco was a member of the Virginia Beach State of Virginia and National Education Associations. Therefore, now, therefore be it resolved, on August 22, 2022, Rosa Blanco passed away, leaving a rich legacy with her decades of educational leadership and community dedication that is duly recognized and applauded. Be it further resolved that the City Council hereby honors the memory of Rosa A. Blanco and extends condolences to her family, friends, and loved ones in memory of Rosa Accartio Blanco, adopted by the City Council of Virginia Beach on the fourth day of October 2022, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council. Yeah, it's a much farther walk than it looks like here. Oh, now, please, come on over. Hey, God bless you all. Thank you. Hey, something, I got a few of you saying to you, Mark.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and the members of the Virginia Beach City Council. On behalf of our Council of United Filipino Organizations of Tidewater, Virginia Incorporated, I'm Dr. Cynthia Romero, the chairman of the council. And I'm proud to be accompanied by many members of our council, our member organizations, especially the Filipino Women's Club of Tidewater. As you heard, it's the oldest Filipino organization here in our region, as well as other organizations, including our Filipino American National Historical Society, the Hampton Roads Chapter. Truly on behalf of our council, our community of the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia, and our Filipino community, I want to thank you for generously recognizing Rosa, who clearly was a strong representative not only of our culture, but of our very diverse community that we're so proud of. And just want to thank you all for your leadership and support of our community here in Virginia Beach and certainly throughout the region.
The strength of Virginia Beach are having people like Rosa among us.
Absolutely.
And we valued her contributions. And we remember that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. Next is a public hearing on the acquisition by agreement or condemnation to construct a city pump on Euclid Place.
We have one speaker, Barbara Massner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, this ties in. Acquisition by agreement or condemnation, construct a city pump station. The bond referendum is a scam. You can't fix what you've destroyed. And all this should have been replaced decades ago. All this flooding that's destroying people's cars and houses is caused by uncontrolled growth and failing to fix the infrastructure. So... Yeah, I'm opposed with the way you manage your money and create debt and don't fix basic city services. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the city, you know, script for the speakers. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decor. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Do we have any speakers on multiple items?
Mayor, I believe you need to do the add-on first.
Okay.
We need to vote on this. This is an order that's confirming the declaration of a local emergency due to the nor'easter. I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
And this is to be added on to the agenda.
Okay. The vote is going to be open?
Just one second, please. The vote's open.
All right, thank you. And this is for the add-on.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this item has been added to the agenda.
Okay, if you can call any multiple item speakers?
Barbara Massner. Ms. Massner, the only items that you will not be speaking on at this time are four and 12. That's it. Number four and 12, ma'am.
Four and 12.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to set it to six minutes? Okay, thank you. I think it's wonderful. The only person I see here that's ever run for council, been on council, is just here to take pictures. No candidates. And this is my three minutes? Okay, and I want to correct, since I don't have an opportunity to correct the conflicts, because everything you do, including adding something on that we're not aware of, should not be voted on tonight, hasn't been advertised. And the person that just read it, I said that they had stock in Town Bank. I meant to say something else, but since you're so rude. This is 2014, and this is the statement of economic interest. It's like millions here for auditing. There's the name of the Vice Mayor. And it's tied to CPA work.
Okay, could you please stick to the items on the agenda as prescribed in what I just read?
In your interpretation of your government. Okay, and the other person... You know, you vote... Okay, let me get to these. Okay, so... Human rights. You don't take care of human rights. You don't allow due process. Traffic calming. That is the biggest scam on the planet. You slow things down and make people more upset. These circles and everything. It's crazy. Okay. Now, you pull four. Authorize streaming services for the appointed temporary council member, Dalcino Miles, for Bayside. None of y'all even agree to ensuring that there's closed caption, cart services. And yet, somebody wants to have live streaming and use our staff that's overworked. So I'm opposed. Everyone... Ms. Henley's the only one who's agreed, you know, not to use Building 19 while she's running. Okay. Appropriate 1 million from Parks and Rec. Special Revenue Fund for capital project repair rec centers. It's your... We hire plenty of people. You can't even find enough people to replace the ones that have quit since the mass shooting and since the COVID, you know, forcing people to take shots and wear masks, et cetera. So... You know, we already pay for this. You shouldn't appropriate 1 million from Parks and Rec for a capital improvement project that's your basic duty to take care of. Okay? Amphitheater repairs, 1 million. That is the stupidest waste of money on the planet. People are overcharged to sit in the grass. And you should have built a real arena decades ago. A beach is not a venue. Our sidewalks are not venues. Vibe District is not a venue. You create venues and you tax us, and the alcohol is outrageous. Okay? And appropriate 65,000 from the Office of Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia to the Commonwealth Attorney Operating Budget. Adult drug treatment and court programs. You promote, you and your partners in the media promote alcohol, vaping, drugs, everything that's unhealthy. And then you want to have a program. We don't need government running everything. We need government keeping us safe. And I just got the FOIA. Where's the title? Anyway, it just came in today. But a sheriff cannot have a dual role as a city council member. I'll bring the code next time. I'll email it to you. But... And it's important that most of these things, that kind of money, is a super majority, nine vote. And the people who have conflicts, including Linwood, and who has a hotel that benefits from the dome and everything else that he's voting on, should not vote, shouldn't be in the room. At least Sesame's left the room most of the time. And gambling prevention. Give me a break. You create problems for people, and then you want to fix them? You fail to take care of your people that pay your salaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Wilson, if you could be so kind.
Yes. Under ordinances and resolutions, number one, ordinance to amend City Code Section 2-459 regarding the composition of the Human Rights Commission requested by Councilmember Berluci. Number two, ordinance to amend City Code Section 21-230 rate the traffic calming at Broad Bay between North Great Neck and Lone Pine Roads. Number three, resolutions to add an additional three members regarding Process Improvement Steering Committee requested by City Council. Number five is to authorize the provision of streaming services rate Councilmember Miles Bayside Town Hall on November 29, 2022, requested by Councilmember Miles. Number six, ordinance to appropriate 1 million from Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund to Capital Project 127 Community Recreation Center Repairs and Renovations regarding supportive ongoing maintenance needs. Number seven is to defer to October 18. Ordinance to appropriate $1 million from the redirection of previously appropriated American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding to the Virginia Beach Development Authority regarding the amphitheater roof repairs and renovation requested by Councilman Branch. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $398,864 from the Department of Homeland Security to the FY 2022-23 Fire Department Operating Budget and provide a local match of $39,886 regarding overtime costs associated with paramedic training. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate 65,000 from the Office of Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia to the FY 2022-23 Commonwealth Attorney Operating Budget and authorize local match 25% provided by Human Services Department and Kind Resources regarding adult drug treatment court program. Number 10 is ordinance to accept and appropriate $289,516 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Departmental Services, DVHDS, to the FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget and establish two full-time positions regarding expansion of services related to STEP-Virginia. Number 11 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $20,000 from the Virginia Beach Department of Behavioral Health and Department Services, DVHDS, to FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget regarding Support Problem Gambling Prevention Service. I move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote is open. Yeah, on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And the add-on is the ordinance confirming the declaration of a local emergency due to a nor'easter.
Thank you. Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the items as read by Vice Mayor Wood, noting number seven... I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wilson. I'm so messed up. Sorry. Number seven has been deferred to October 18. Is there another one deferred? And that's all. That's all at this point.
And thank you to the bookends of the council dais for reminding us about the add-on. That was most appropriate. Thank you. You know, it's a lot of work, you know, getting the consent agenda organized and read. Thank you very much. The ordinance is item number four, ordinance to award a $5,000 Community Services Micro Grant to Roadshow Alliance Suicide Prevention rate financial assistance toward the My Life Matters musical requested by Councilmember Berluci.
We have two speakers, Mayor. The first speaker is Barbara Massner. And after Ms. Massner will be Sarah Gerloff.
Do you have to start it before I get here and start speaking? Okay. Award 5,000 Community Services Micro Grant gift. Roadshow Alliance Suicide Prevention. This isn't a game, people dying. People have been locked up. You were exempt. The city was exempt from the COVID mandate. I've sent it to you many times. Their kids could have been in school. Everyone did not have to wear masks. You didn't wear a mask half the time. My Life Matters musical requested by Mr. Berluci. This is ridiculous. Where does the money come from? Let it come out of your pocket. You know, there's plenty of people that donate to PBS. They use their own money. They don't occasionally have their bank or their company donate for a tax break. And the code, as far as people voting. A sheriff cannot hold more than one office at a time. Code Title 15.2...
What does this have to do with the current application?
It has to do with your votes, Mr. Dyer. Title 15.2-1534.
The instruction is to stick with the item at hand. You are not talking about the item on hand.
I did, and I talked about who can vote. And since I'm talking about who can vote, these are the attorneys, the law firms you hire for outside legal work, including Kaufman and Cannol's.
Okay, this doesn't have anything to do with the item at hand.
I watch your votes. You vote. You add on. You don't follow parliamentary procedure, and you don't treat people polite. You're not welcome.
The next speaker is Sarah Gerloff.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Okay, so Berluci, you're proposing an ordinance to award a $5,000 micro grant to the special interest group to the special interest group Roadshow Alliance Suicide Prevention for the musical My Life Matters. So you're going to take taxpayers' money, which will be used for a, it said for a major artist fee, to help attract people to this event aimed at promoting suicide prevention and mental health bullying awareness. It read that stats show nine out of 10 men of color will not voluntarily visit a mental health therapist or use employee assistant programs. But for some reason, you believe that they are going to be more apt to attend a musical? To listen to cast members share their experiences and coping strategies? So basically, Michael, you believe it is a good idea to take taxpayers' money and give it to this special interest group to promote a musical that you believe will help men of color deal with mental health issues? Is that right? That's what it sounds like to me. So since stats show these men do not typically seek therapy, why do you think they will attend a musical? Why do you even think a musical is going to help with mental health issues? It won't. People with mental health issues need someone to communicate with, someone they can trust to share their feelings with and work with to find solutions. A musical just does not seem to be a real solution to this real problem. I am not in favor of you misappropriating tax dollars to support your special interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Berluci, do we have a?
Mayor, at this time, I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion at this point?
All right, the vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 12. Ordinance to transfer $1,360,000 from the Capital Project, Project 10264, Lynn Haven River Watershed Water Quality Projects 2 to Capital Projects 10472 Water Quality Cost Participation Projects 2. Ray, allow this city to negotiate and execute cost participation agreement. Okay, and I guess the recommendation is to defer this? Indefinitely. Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. We have, we do have two speakers. The first speaker is Derek Copeland, and after Mr. Copeland is Barbara Messner. And the motion will be to defer indefinitely. Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody on the council. Just hearing this deferred indefinitely kind of may change some of my speaking here, but I rushed over here just to try to understand what was happening with this ordinance. The land that is at the corner of Great Neck Road and Mill Dam, which is the neighborhood that I live in, I am the current acting president of the Great Neck Estates Civic League. I work hand in hand with the Great Neck, I'm sorry, Great Neck Estates Civic League. I work hand in hand with the Great Neck Lakes Association President. And so when I saw this ordinance, I had to question, especially that it was coming from the developer who is actually trying to currently buy the land. And in buying the land, there's been a lot of discussions that has greatly concerned our neighborhoods, the members of my community, addressing that, you know, this reservoir pond that's been on the land has supported the, what I believe to be a natural occurring filtration system, as well as a water reservoir that prevents flooding. And so we've had some concerns to just what is the long-term role of the developer in taking the land, purchasing it, moving the pond, not replacing the pond? What is the long-term effect? So I'll wrap this up short because it sounds like it was deferred indefinitely. This is no longer being considered. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak just as it is something that our neighborhood has been greatly watching over the last few years and concerned with. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
I've been here when y'all have taken land over in the Great Neck Corridor, over by Bubba's, and all those places, creating parking. You shouldn't be controlling all the land in our city. And $1,360,000 from Capital Project. Luckily, somebody was paying attention. Most people are super busy, and, you know, they don't see what's coming. I don't even know what Ms. Wilson read for the add-on. But I think it's important. Water quality. You use our oceanfront for a venue instead of building an arena. It's filthy. It's absolutely filthy. And I don't think people realize, you know, where all the waste goes. Supposedly treated, goes back in the ocean. 62nd Street has never been fixed. So you have no right to be involved in water quality when our entire city is a swamp. And the bond referendum. You know, where's all this money coming from? We have debt, $3 billion debt. And you keep adding to it and buying land and making all these crazy deals. And you totally ignore it, either morally and ethically. Most of you cannot vote. You have financial, and people that are multimillionaires, I mean, the list of millions for certain people, and they still take a salary for decades. Some of them since 1996, some of them since '78. Even Mr. Disteth and Richard Maddox didn't take a salary. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion at this point?
So we're going to move to defer this indefinitely.
Okay, any other discussion on it? All right, vote is open.
I'm sorry, by a vote of 11 to 0, you have deferred this item indefinitely.
Okay, at this point, we'll ask our Vice Mayor to read the appointments.
For the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, Christopher Williams. For the Health Services Advisory Board, Dr. Theron Williams. For the Open Space Advisory Committee, Richard Bowie, Francis Drum, William Fleming, and Jared Katzer. For the Parks and Rec Commission, these are students, Tyler Cuyard and Quinn Zelinski. The Public Library Board, this is a junior high school student, Anna Christina Oroch. And I think that's, that's it.
That's it.
It was the first one I said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Christopher Williams.
I had a moment.
That's okay, we all have this.
I have a few of those myself these days. Okay, are we ready for the vote?
The vote is open, yes. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, any unfinished business? Mr. Moss.
Mr. Moss, could you turn your microphone on, please?
The noise ordinance is on the October 18 agenda, but that will be a deferred item as we'll be having the Mr. Tower, Mr. Moss workshop on the 10th of November. So that, so people looking at the calendar, that will be a deferred item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Any new business? Okay, we're going to adjourn and prepare for open mic.